So, Eric, back to your earlier question. Now, I understand if we didn't have the Urban Renewal District, the taxes that were in there, there are other taxing jurisdictions that aren't getting that even.
Their money would...
Sure.
Their money wouldn't go to us.
I'm sorry, Jesse, I have to do something really quick.
...the fire district. Urban renewal district gets a portion of tax from all taxing jurisdictions.
There's a lot of people who aren't fans of it. I'm kind of in the middle, I don't really care. But if we could eliminate it and reduce taxes, great.
But no, no, it won't. It'll just go to other places. It doesn't change the tax rate. It just diverges.
The piece of the pie, yeah.
To a special, limited area of the plan that sells house. But like all the public art going on down town improvements, they wouldn't have public art to attack this, or general five.
The public art thing is a fine, in my opinion. We're spending so much...
Is it voted? Is it voted the people?
I know, yeah.
One of the, I think it was the first urban renewal district put into place.
Really?
It's like 1% of everything, isn't it? 1% of all state spending? That's...
Oh, we got a crowd today, this is gonna be... I missed the agenda item to which they were associated.
I know, I didn't see that either.
It's not the acceptance of an easement, for sure. Or the budget adoption.
They're probably going to have a petition for it. What's that? Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I must have got, there's only text messages.
Is everything okay?
Unless I'm just looking at it, maybe there's only text messages. Just a couple of my friends chatting, I'm like, geez.
Oh, the group. That kills me sometimes, the group messaging. Or like the serial text messenger that can't just put it all in one text, but they divide it up into 10 text messages.
Yeah. Yeah, so how do you like the T-Sline?
I've been on it ever since I was diagnosed, so that was 10 years ago.
Oh, wow.
I was 37 when I was diagnosed.
I'm a comic, I like comics, but I don't know where.
It is 7 o'clock and I will call the City Woodburn Council meeting to order. Can we, we will start with the flag ceremony that is going to be led by Troop 13007. We have Sarah Garza as the troop master, so invite them in for our flag ceremony.
Crossbows, attention. Color guard advance. Color guard, poster colors. Color guard, honor your flag. Please join us in saying the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, retire the colors. Color guard, dismissed.
Thank you very much. Good job. Very good. Troop 1307, 07, you have a lot to be proud of. Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Cornwell?
Present.
Counselor Cabralis?
Here.
Counselor Schaub?
Here.
Counselor Wilk?
Here.
Counselor Kentu?
Here.
Counselor Morris?
I'm here.
Mayor Launergan?
Here. Few announcements. City Hall and the library will be closed on June 19th this year, in observance of June 19th day. Transit hours will be running that day from 8 to 3, and the Aquatic Center will be open the regular hours. We have the Taste of Woodburn coming up. City Woodburn invites everyone to enjoy a family-friendly weekend of live entertainment, local vendors, and tons of great food at a Saturday, June 22nd from noon to 9:00 p.m. and Sunday, June 23rd from noon, 12 o'clock to 6:00 p.m. That'll be at the Woodburn Downtown Plaza, off North First between Garfield and West Hayes. And then, given an early notice, our city council meeting will have, in July, we'll have our community barbecue scheduled to take place on Tuesday, July 9th at 6:00 p.m. to coincide with the kickoff of Music in the Park. So that is a Tuesday night, not our normal Monday night. I do not have any appointments, do not have any community government organizations' proclamations. So next up, we are honored, seriously honored, to have our Woodburn High School Bulldog Team, Basketball Team, here tonight, and we're going to recognize them for having one heck of a year. So first, they've had 28 games, they won 23 of those, only five losses, very good record. They were 2024 Mid-Wilamette Conference Champions again, so that's two years running. Congratulations, that is fantastic. Not only that, after you were conference champions, you were invited to State, went on, won a couple of games at State, ended up in third place. Fantastic. So, we would like to recognize our individuals that are on the team. Our council president, Schaub, will go down with our city recorder, and I will call out players' names, please come up, get a certificate, and then line up for pictures. I'm going to start with Samuel Hernandez Cortez. Please come on down. Come on down. Next up is Logan Taylor. Ray Lee Aguilar Rodriguez. Anthony was honorable mention all conference. Fernando Del Rio. Fernando also is honorable mention all conference. Dylan, Dylan Renteria. Dylan also was honorable mention all conference. Brody was second-team all conference. Liam, Liam Sladham. Liam was first-team all conference and second-team all-state. Liam, were you the center? Were you the center? Cruz was Mid-Wilamette Conference Player of the Year, first-team all-conference, first-team This is the team, and the assistant coaches. I'd like Pete Sannival, please. RJ Valles.
If I could, if I could say something. We had a freshman that joined us for the state tournament, wasn't on our varsity roster, but helped us at the state tournament as well, and that was Logan Pinky.
Logan. Thank you, Logan, for helping out. Ben Schultz?
Not here.
Victor Ramirez?
Not here.
Joe Osasser?
Not.
Daniel Knopf?
Nope.
Not here.
Coach Knopf.
Okay, so that leaves only one. That is Coach For All Valles. Coach Valles was Mid-Wilamette Conference Coach of the Year, two years running. So, we have Jesse taking pictures.
I don't think I have a tall enough camera. Counselor, should you get up here too?
Okay, we'll stand up.
Ready? Come on, is he killed? We'll be right, we'll be right here. There you go, ready? Hey, guy in the window there, Duncan. All right, one, two. Perfect, thank you.
You guys have done a lot for Woodburn, and so, keep it up.
Definitely, definitely something we try to do, represent our community, so, thank you.
You've done a fantastic job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. See you here next year.
Heather, thank you for helping there, Sharon. Thank you. That was fun. Yeah, it's good to recognize these guys, we have to keep the relationship with the school. Moving on, can't move on, I just lost my glasses. We have a work session for legislative amendment to the Woodburn Development Ordinance regarding food cart regulations. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
This is exciting, I know you guys have done a lot of work on this for a while.
Yeah.
It's good to hear it.
Good evening to Mr. Mayor, Chris Kirk, Community Development Director. I'm basically just going to introduce Dan Handel, our planner, who's been working on this very diligently for the past few months, as you say. It's been a lot of work, and I actually see some, the Planning Commission Chair behind us.
I'd like to recognize our Planning Commission Chair.
She's very interested to see this, well, they worked really hard on this.
Lisa's worth.
Yeah, yeah. They worked really hard.
Lisa, thank you for all your help in working on this, too.
Yeah, they did a great job. Go ahead, Dan, he's gonna, he'll walk you through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I'm Dan Handel, and the planner's here for the city, and like Chris mentioned, I'll be kind of hosting a work session here for you tonight. This is for a legislative amendment to our development ordinance, basically our zoning code, on the topic of food cart pods. It's work session only, informative, informational, I'm here to answer any questions, concerns you might have, run through the proposal, no actions required of you tonight. So, next slide. I'll go through our current rules in our zoning code for food carts, the challenges created by these current rules, and then I'll go through some of the amendments that are being proposed. Before I do that, I do want to just give a little bit of context for how we got here. So back in August of last year, council passed a resolution to initiate some legislative amendments to broad, pretty broad scope of topics in the development ordinance. Food carts was one of those topics. And then, as was mentioned, over the last few months, our Planning Commission held three different work sessions on this topic. Just had a public hearing a couple of weeks ago, on May 23rd, and commissioners voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the amendments that you received in your packet tonight. I want to thank our commissioners for all the time and effort they put into this. It's very thoughtful, very intentional what the amendments you see here tonight are, so very appreciative of that, and I also mentioned that staff is supportive of them, so we're pleased to bring it to you tonight. And I want to start here with a definition, just to kind of get us all on the same page. When I say the term "food cart," basically any type of vehicle you can think of that sells food to, directly to a customer. So we're talking about trucks, trailers, wagons, pushcarts, all of that. And this definition on the screen comes from Oregon Health Authority. That's kind of the overarching state regulatory body here, so it's important to be consistent there with, with the state on that definition. Current rules and practices for food carts in our zoning code, right now they're only allowed in industrial zones. There's a small exception downtown here, little pushcarts are allowed to operate on the sidewalk. They can only sell pre-cooked or prepackaged food items, but that's only downtown, otherwise food trucks are only allowed in industrial zones. Couple of other standards, can't be in the right-of-way, have to be on private property, and can't block driveways, parking aisles, entrances, and then there's a small parking requirement. But otherwise, pretty minimal, pretty low bar, low threshold to meet. And what we actually see happen is generally when folks will come into City Hall to our front counter and ask about where they can open up a food cart, they're looking at a commercial zone, typically along Highway 9090 is really where they're wanting to locate. Since that's not in our area of allowed zones, they'll go instead to this temporary special event permit that our office administers, and that kind of gives them a temporary way to go where they want to go, usually in a commercial zone along 9090, for up to 60 days. So that's basically a summary of what we currently see right now. And challenges with these rules right now and kind of the practices we have, like I mentioned, these cart operators, they want to be in a visible spot where customers can see them, can find them, can easily access their location, and those are usually commercial zones, which they're not allowed in. There's really no formal review that our office does for the ones that want to go in an industrial zone. There's no permit to approve, we just have those couple of standards and that's about it. In terms of the special event permit, that's not really the intended use of this permit. It's more designed for like a Taste of Woodburn event, Cinco de Mayo event, some of those three-day events, or like a farmer's market that might go once a week for a number of weeks. We also see it pretty commonly every year for 4th of July firework tents, Christmas tree stands, some of those seasonal sales events. So the food truck's not really intended for this purpose. And there's also some enforcement challenges associated with this special event process here. Staff doesn't really have the capacity to go out there and monitor, see, are these carts actually closed when, on the days they're say they're going to be closed? Are they kind of packing up and moving on after their permit expires? Also, sometimes folks will just set up shop without even coming up into, talk to us about where they can operate. So there's some enforcement challenges we see right now that we're hoping to address. And also, on the operator side of this, the cart owners, they don't always see consistent rules being applied because someone will not come and talk to us and open up, another person will, and they'll get the temporary permit, but they'll exceed their 60 days, and we're not out there catching that. So it's just, it doesn't, it doesn't look consistent. So those are some challenges that we'll, we're hoping to address here with hopefully a better regulatory approach. And through the work sessions that our Planning Commission held, commissioners really focused in on some priorities for what these regulations should look like and address. Safety was number one, we want to make sure these food carts are safe. Cleanliness and accessibility are very important, we want our rules to be enforceable. But kind of alongside all of that, commissioners were really intentional about wanting to balance that and have the, kind of the bar of entry for a property owner be more modest and achievable to actually develop something. So what we kind of all coalesced behind was this concept of a food cart pod. Many of you are probably already familiar with the concept, but what we're talking about here is a site that has space for three or more food carts and associated amenities, parking, seating areas, restrooms, that, all that stuff. That would be under common management on private property. So a couple examples in nearby communities shown there, and if I could summarize our amendments in one slide, it would be this here. So this was what Commission really deliberated on and recommended to you tonight. So this would be requiring all food carts to be located within a food cart pod, so that would be a new use category in our zoning code. And there'd be a couple exceptions outlined here. Mobile food services, so that would be the type of food cart that would travel around to typically probably a larger employer, set up shop during a meal break, serve meals to employees, and then pack up and move on. So that would be up to four hours, and then they'd be required to move along. Again, that would be private property, so not in the right-of-way, not on the street, anything like that. Delivery services, kind of like an ice cream truck is the most common example I can think of.
So a neighborhood ice cream truck with music is still good?
They would, yeah, that, nothing would change for them, they would still be allowed, they are required to move...
Get a permit.
There's no real permit process for them, but they are required to move to a new location every 15 minutes or quicker, so they're constantly moving.
Relating to that, is there any way that we can put a limit on the sound of those ice cream trucks, the decibels? They're just, it's obnoxious, and we, like Centennial Park, they'll sit there for half an hour with this music playing on and on, or the dog park, and it's just like, let's go home, this is outrageous.
We do have the noise ordinance, and I don't know if that would cover this.
Yeah, that would probably be regulated under different ordinance, so likely a parks ordinance or our noise ordinance, but probably wouldn't fit into like a zoning code use item.
So who would regulate that? Code enforcement?
Code enforcement would regulate that, yes.
Yeah, thank you. And then, so delivery services, mobile food services, both kind of exceptions here, and then special events, like we were talking about earlier, we'd still allow food carts as part of special events, just on a more limited scale. We would only allow them as part of those kind of the, up to three days, like a Taste of Woodburn, Cinco de Mayo, or a recurring one-day-a-week event like a farmer's market. So it wouldn't, no longer would it apply to like a 30 to 60-day window. So that was a pretty important change to make here.
I have another quick question.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I understand one of our businesses in town is having, like you said, a farmer's market on Saturdays, they're trying to get that started. Are, would that group be permitted, the business permitted, to let food carts come on? Would they be ruled by the ordinance that we're putting in place, or is it up to the parking lot that's owned by the store? I'm not seeing it very clearly.
Yeah, so if they wanted to do a special event, one-day-a-week deal, they would have to make sure everything is packed up and gone at the end of each, each week, or each occurrence of the event. So it would more follow that special event process rather than an actual like food cart review.
And these carts are approved by the state insofar as cleanliness and all that? Who goes through and checks on that frequently?
Marion County Health and Human Services would be the permitting agency on behalf of Oregon Health Authority, and they get a, I think it's a food handler's mobile food license for their cart. County does inspections. For food carts, also our fire marshal likes to do an operational permit, he'll come out and make sure all of your cooking equipment and heating equipment is set up properly, make sure things are safe.
Is that like just once a season that they get checked out, or is it like we're going to drop in and surprise you?
I believe the county one is random, and the fire marshal's permit is annual, and usually he'll want to go in right before you open up and inspect everything.
So the scenario that Counselor Cornwell was just talking about, so there's a farmer's market and all of a sudden a food cart shows up, does that food cart have to have a special permit, or is it under the disguise of whoever has the farmer's market?
It would be through that broad farmer's market event permit. They would, the property owner and whoever's running that event would outline to us through a special event application, here's everything that's going to be happening here, here's where the carts are going to be located, here's how folks can get in and out, fire marshal would review that for emergency access.
Okay.
And all sorts of...
Dan, just to tweak the question a little bit, because what I understood was that there's a farmer market event that does not include food carts, but the food carts show up anyways because there's going to be a clientele potentially and maybe park on the city sidewalk or the curb. What happens?
Very good, then that would become an enforcement action.
Call the police.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. You guys said that we don't have enforcement, right? We do have three code enforcement officers, community service officers, but they do all city codes, so nuisance, noise, that was mentioned earlier. So this falls under code enforcement then? For enforcing it then? Right, yeah, a lot of, for like zoning-related items, fences, signs, things like that, food carts as well. We try to collaborate as best as we can with them.
To clarify, in terms of inspection for health standards, that is not the jurisdiction of the city though, so we do not enforce that.
Correct.
That is the Marion County Health Department.
On behalf of OHA, Oregon Health Authority?
Yeah.
We try to collaborate as best, best as we can with them.
To clarify, in terms of inspection for health standards, that is not the jurisdiction of the city though, so we do not enforce that.
Correct.
That is the Marion County Health Department.
On behalf of OHA, Oregon Health Authority?
Yeah.
What's, so just to comment, I think, I think it's important, and it gets to some of your questions. Under the current structure, we have, if you haven't seen it, there's pretty much essentially a large loophole in the special event permit that, that food trucks have been driving through, right, for a long time. And it's meant, enforcement's been very hard to follow up with for each one of these because the process they're going through isn't really defined well in the code. This will clear that up. This will make sure that where food carts are going in a pod, they're going to be in this, essentially a pod, the way you think of a food cart pod where you come and visit them. And Dan will talk about those regulations. And now we're cleaning up, and that's where this short, it's only a couple of changes to the code, but they're very important ones about how we treat food carts with special events. Now we get to see them up front, it's much easier to follow up on. Right now, it's almost impossible because of the way the code's written. So, believe me, I'm the one who's been leading the charge to make these changes in the, to the special event component. And they're really important. And I think this is going to be really beneficial, make it a lot easier for us and our code enforcement officers to make sure these things are, are kept up the right way. And I think the food cart pod component's going to be really nice when we get one that comes in. Dan will talk about some of those details, and that's what the, the planning commission spent a long time really working on, what those details are.
Currently, I'm aware of only one pod in town. When Amazon opens up, they've moved us to allow one out in that part of town.
He'll, Dan will talk about all the zones where they talked about those, you know, the planning commission spent a lot of time thinking about where would we want to allow these, right? Everywhere? Only in commercial zones? Only in industrial zones? And it will be in both industrial and commercial. I think one interesting, can we think about these food trucks that still, that sometimes come to these large employers? This actually happened during the Amazon construction project because it went on for so long and they had, you know, 800 people out there working. Amazon just hired someone to come out every single day and, and serve lunch to all these people who are out there to make it move faster. That's sort of that mobile food service that Dan was talking about. But clarifying these definitions is going to be really important for us and make it easier for everyone to understand those rules.
Yes, food cart pods will be allowed in all commercial and industrial zones is what the proposal, proposed amendment would, would clarify here.
With that, just sorry to interrupt.
No, please.
So I'm a big fan of food cart pods, I think they're really cool. I can just picture it's going to be right down the street from my house because everything seems to be in Woodburn. That's the way it happens. Temporary use ones, homeless shelters, it's all a stone's throw from my house. So, and that is sarcasm if you're not picking it up.
Walking distance, easy for you to grab.
Yeah, exactly. Walking distance, yeah. So in bigger metro areas, a lot of food cart pods have alcohol as a, like a, it draws people in along with the food and everything. Is that in here? I haven't read through all the red line changes that I saw in the packet yet, so.
That would be up to the developer manager, how they chose to incorporate that or not. They would go through the standard process, like any bar or restaurant, for obtaining the OLCC license for that.
So my only hesitation with that is I know that's literally a rubber stamp process, so if we didn't want to have that as part of the development ordinance, can we not allow it ahead of time? That's been my experience on city council for, I don't know how many years, that anybody applying for a liquor license, OLCC gives them a liquor license unless they've, and I've even heard, heard lots of horror stories about people getting liquor licenses that do things probably they're not supposed to be doing. So I'm not a big fan of having a food cart pod with a whole bunch of alcohol right down the street from my house, hypothetically speaking.
That's, yeah, thank you. What I, what I will say is the current rules are basically, or the proposed rules for a food cart pod would allow them in basically any area where a standard restaurant or bar would be located. So it would be kind of a, a difference in, you'd be treating one differently than the other, I think.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And I'm okay with that.
That's the purpose, huh?
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not a good politician. That's exactly what I'm saying. I want it to be different.
Okay.
Okay, but you're saying that that's not what's in, that's not what these guys were thinking?
It's not what's being proposed before you.
I've just, and it's, it's a good question. It's one of the things that, again, that came up with the planning commission. Dan's going to, he might mention briefly that we had, the planning commission had, during their work sessions, we reached out to some other successful food cart pods in the area, Salem, West Lynn, Happy Valley, and some other places that.
I've been in Happy Valley.
That have worked. And we actually had the operators come in, and you'll never guess what one of the most critical components was for these people to make sure that it works from a monetary basis was.
Shelter and alcohol.
Yeah, they needed alcohol, right, because the alcohol is what makes it work financially for them. It was a key component that we heard from them. I just offer that up as a, not, it's not a surprise to you. And it was, it was, boy, the alcohol is what makes this work.
But it's beer and wine, it's not a.
Well, I should say beer and wine. I don't, when I say alcohol.
Thank you.
Right, beer and wine, excuse me.
Sorry, I got you off track.
No, that's all good. That's a good question. Okay, so, yeah, summary, we would be requiring all food carts to go into a pod, and we've actually had good feedback from some cart operators about this. They get frustrated with the, the temporary permit as well because they have to keep moving around, they'd much rather prefer a single location that they can create consistency with their customers over. So we had some good feedback on making this requirement into the food cart pod, rather than seeing kind of the one offs all over the place. So if we go to the next, in terms of some actual requirements that we'd be looking at, oops. Minimum setbacks to property lines, separation between carts, we'd have requirements for parking, landscaping, seating areas, walkways, trash containers, restrooms, et cetera. Street improvements like what we would require for a single family dwelling, which is basically sidewalk and trees. In terms of utilities, oops, sorry, back one. Each cart within the pod would have a utility, or a city water and sewer utility connection. It would have PGE power, natural gas, if they chose to put in natural gas. Generators and propane tanks for the individual carts would not be allowed. That was something that the commission discussed, and ultimately for safety, safety reasons, wanted to move away from those propane tanks. And then, just like any other stormwater detention, or any other commercial project, there'd be stormwater detention requirements. And then, this would also be formalizing a review process and a permitting process for this type of development, something that we don't really have right now. So the food cart pod would be, would go through a planning department review for compliance with the zoning code. Any structures that would require building permits would apply for those building permits. The city engineer would look at utilities, infrastructure. Fire marshal would do a formal review of the plans for emergency access, safety, all of that. And then, once it's up and running, each cart that moves in there to operate would obtain that Health and Human Services license from Marion County. They would get a city business registration, and then there'd be an annual Woodburn Fire District operational permit. So that's where that, the fire marshal would come out and inspect the setup, make sure things are correctly installed and, and safe. So that'd be a much more formal review of everything. And I wanted to touch briefly on some of the outreach and feedback we got through these work sessions and the public hearing with the planning commission. Commissioners heard from a couple of cart operators and pod developers, and some local residents here in town that were all supportive of the idea and the amendments. We also attended several downtown business association meetings, and just wanted to solicit some feedback from business owners downtown on, on their thoughts of it. They were supportive of the changes, they were very supportive, very, almost like tunnel vision supportive of the prohibition on food carts, mostly those food, the push carts operating on sidewalks. So right now, that's specifically carved out to allow them, that would be changing to.
So those businesses that have hot carts out in front of their front door and they're selling on the sidewalk, that's no longer allowed?
That's a great question. If you, if a business owner downtown with a storefront wanted to do a display of merchandise out front, or have an outdoor dining area, that would still be allowed. It would be if a random vendor wanted to come down and, and push a cart along the sidewalk, that would no longer be allowed.
But could they cook out on the sidewalk? No?
A business, uh.
Right, a business.
Yeah. There's a lot of restaurants down on Front Street now, and they start, they cook and sell in front of their store.
If they are doing that in the store already, they are allowed to do that out front as well.
So even though they're blocking sidewalks and everything else, that's, we're not approaching that?
They do need to maintain at least four feet of sidewalk to be used for walking, but otherwise they are allowed to use that area up front. We do have a maximum area, it's 10% of the indoor square footage, but it's not really something we do a review on.
And enforcement of that is ordinance as well?
Right, our code enforcement, yeah.
City code.
Let's see. Yeah, Willamette Garage. So as Chris mentioned earlier, we had a, a food cart pod developer come down to one of our work sessions, and he built the Willamette Garage up in West Lynn. This was an old gas station that got repurposed. So they kept the canopy, turned that into outdoor seating area, the, kind of the convenience shop part of it was turned into the, the bar with the restrooms, and the carts are on the outside of it. And this was just kind of an example of what we'd be hoping to achieve with these new rules. It's something that looks really nice, and it works really well, permanent utilities, it's got landscaping, all the amenities that, that folks would look for, and in a destination for food carts.
Are you suggesting a city would take on a structure such as that and landscaping? Is that?
No, this would be a private, private development.
Private, individual, business.
Yeah, this is private development. But the, the gentleman who ran this, Mr. John Stromquist, I do want to give him a thank you. He came down to one of the, the work sessions and just gave a, kind of a discussion on what process he went through, the design decisions he made. So it was a really informative conversation that the planning commission got to have.
Do we have any idea of, I, I can picture one spot on 99, the old McDonald's market, you know, spot right there, but otherwise, I mean, we've talked about the amount of developable, developable land in Woodburn. Is there other, have you guys basically scoped out and thought about where they might go?
There's a few vacant properties along 990. Some are on the smaller side and some are a little bit larger, but there are some opportunities, that's for sure.
Is the property owner that runs the one out on industrial, like keen on this idea? Because it, it sounds like that would be shut down as it currently is running.
Good question. So they, this, that property and that kind of conglomeration of carts is more or less the result of our current code.
Right, just not, being able to be enforced.
And, and very low, low bar of standards, yeah. So that, it's grandfathered, it would be grandfathered in, it would be able to continue operating under the current code. They're actually in review right now for a, like a bathroom and some utilities.
So they want to make improvements, but they're like also okay with kind of keeping it as it is?
Right. We wouldn't be able to require them to meet current code, they would have to choose to, to meet this proposed amendment.
There are some current code issues right now that they need to clear up, but they wouldn't be subject to these new requirements once these are adopted. It's an existing, it would be a non-conforming use once this changed.
Well, it's good to know when people ask that they're grandfathered in and they don't have to meet the same criteria.
Right, that would be the only one, by the way.
Okay, okay.
When the carts, existing carts there moves out and a new cart comes in, why can't we enforce our new ordinance code as far as cleanliness? I don't know. Why can't we do that if it's a new cart coming in to an old location?
So the only location that would occur is that one. That's the only location. And it's because they're actually going through a process with us right now under the current code, where we're adopting and making them meet a lot of the legal health requirements and other code issues. Assuming all those things are done and they're legally established before this new code's adopted, then that would be non-conforming and they could keep it. And then, an individual car could come and go in there. That would be the only case that would take place.
Okay, because isn't, isn't the bathrooms, isn't that a, is that a state part, a state code, or is that a Marion County?
It's a state requirement.
Oh, excuse me.
Well, enforced in.
So many feet from a bathroom and stuff like that.
Yeah, you have to be 500 feet away or less to a bathroom unless you're providing it onsite, or you can use your neighbors or if they give access to it.
Dan, how many carts are at this Willamette Garage?
Eight. This one has eight.
And do you know what they're, they pay on a monthly rental charge?
I believe he said around $2,000 a month in rent.
Each individual?
Each cart.
Each cart pays $2,000.
That's crazy.
And that might not work, we're not in West Lynn.
Yeah, I'm thinking, it's got to be economically feasible for a cart to be there, that it's going to be.
That's going to be the issue, like especially in our community. And so with the current, so what, then what happens to those that like have the little carritos that are selling a loan permit, or where would you suggest that they go to sell?
So right now, anybody who had an approved special event permit, that would be honored through the end of its kind of term of approval, but we wouldn't issue any new ones.
In a previous life, we did some ad hoc surveys in Salem of food cart pods and rentals, and it really ran the gamut. From really busy, high traffic areas were really expensive, places that were smaller, less amenities for the customer and stuff, was much lower, a couple hundred bucks a month type of thing. So it really, because we were trying to set up something in my previous job very similar, and it was, it was just all over the place what people were charging. It was all based on the location.
So, in my opinion, and this is me, as just one person in the council, all those food carts, all those carritos is what makes Woodburn Woodburn. And what makes it Little Mexico, that's why we have the saying, Little Mexico, and I appreciate all of the work that it went on and all of this, but I don't think this is, it seems like we're trying to gentrify Woodburn and making it more like, let's take all these food carts and putting them in this section, and then make it clean, which I understand the cleanliness, the safety, I understand all of that, but not taking them out of where they are because that's what feels so amazing walking, driving down 99, driving down downtown, seeing all that I can get food anywhere. And then now it's like I have to go to a certain location to get this specific food. It just doesn't seem like it's really for our community.
I appreciate that question, thank you. One of the challenges that's kind of going on statewide right now with food carts is the Oregon Health Authority has new rules that were actually adopted, I think in 2020, but they delayed the enforcement until, I think, 2023, and they're still kind of delaying the enforcement of it. But they're really pushing permanent water and sewer, restrooms, a lot of these more formal investments in infrastructure for these things.
Dan, would it be fair to say, just to, to someone like me to make sure that I'm, I'm tracking along, that by expanding the, the food carts to be allowed in commercial zones or increasing the locations and opportunity? by expanding the, the food carts to be allowed in commercial zones or increasing the locations and opportunities for people to have food carts?
This is true.
If I have an existing food cart under a special permit in a commercial zone, it alleviates me as a business owner of that food cart from having to continue to pay the special permit. I can now have a permanent location.
Because otherwise you would have to move under the current, the way that it's set up. You can only be there for 60 days. And I know a lot of them like try to get business on Facebook and they're trying to get people to their cart, but if they're moving every 60 days, that probably makes it more difficult.
Sixty days in, it's not consecutive. You could have 60 weekends. You know, that could be your 60 days. Sixty Sundays.
It's been a long 60 days.
I'd be concerned if we were having some sort of a disparate impact on sort of the cultural aspects of the community that we really cherish. But I wanted to make sure I understand that the effect that implementing this in terms of expanding commercial might be beneficial. It doesn't feel like we're, or do I not understand? It's more opportunity, not less opportunity. And it's alleviating the burden on some of the existing operators now who are required to get the special permit who no longer have to bear that expense.
Right.
It's interesting that, this was talked about a lot at the PC.
So I wanted to make sure that I'm tracking along.
So it's, a couple of things, you know, Dan talked about the fact that the PC was trying to not make the bar too high, right? Not make it, believe me, I know how much it costs to redevelop that gas station in West Lynn. It was obscene of what it was to fix it. That's sort of a, it's an outlier, right? So things like the street improvement requirements for this, these food cart pods is the same requirement that we would apply to a single family home. I'll be honest with you, we would apply much more to a restaurant or something new that was coming in. So they, there was, there were efforts, real efforts here to kind of lower that bar so that one of these could get built or more than one could get built. And the other thing, this was actually a surprise to me, we, I don't know if Dan mentioned, we sent out notices to everyone who we've issued temporary food cart truck permits to over the past two years or three years or so. As we were doing these, going through this process, let them know about it, see if we could get some feedback. And the feedback, we got, I thought, pretty interesting feedback from, I can't remember his name. He's a gentleman who runs the current food truck over off Settlemeier, sort of right there, right by the.
Sunrise Market.
Right, right by the Sunrise Market. He came and I'll be honest, I expected him to walk in and say, oh my goodness, I'm gonna have to move my food truck in 90 days or whatever. And he said, that, he said, this looks great. This would be fantastic. I would love a place where I could just bring in my vehicle, have it set up and I have some, you know, and I have these other pieces.
There with like four food carts, it's a pod right there in that location.
That spot might actually be a pretty good location. Now, again, that one example of one, of one user doesn't mean everybody, but I thought that was an interesting take. He actually thought his spot, or that, it's not his own. He doesn't own that property. But he thought, great, I wish this was cleaned up and maybe there were some other ones around me. He was pretty optimistic about it.
So we've got one operator on Settlemeier. The zoning, the zoning amendments we're talking about on food carts would regulate the development of future food cart pods or future areas of development. So what is the, and if we're grandfathering in non-conforming uses, what is the impact to the one-off operator? That's operating right now in maybe an industrial zone or maybe it's questionable, but, but they're operating now. Are they grandfathered in as well? Or are they gonna be, or is the one guy gonna be required to build a restroom right next to his or hers?
No, so if somebody has one there now, they're operating under, except for that one location up on 99 in the industrial. So put that one aside, because that one would, assuming they go through this little process they're working through and meet some minimum fire building, health code issues that they're resolving. Assuming that happens, and I assume it will, that would on its own be a standalone, non-conforming use. Every other one that you see out there, if it's legal, and many of them are not, but if it's illegal, now it's gonna be illegal in the future. If one legally exists now, such as that one, his permit will expire at some point and he will not be able to get a new permit to operate at that location until it comes in as one of these. Or it's a, this quick three-day one-off thing that we have.
Okay, that helps me.
So the one that, the one in Happy Valley that I toured, it's probably been five or six years ago. It was a structure, a very simple structure with a bar in it, but the, the food trucks, they were actually all trailers, all consistently the same. I think they were all self-contained. I mean, that's, to Counselor Caballus's point, the infrastructure that we're talking about here, I, it's gonna be a lot of, that's why that's probably, like you said, it would seem like expensive to build that one. The infrastructure for sewer, water, gas, all that kind of stuff.
It is. It's substantial. And that's exactly what the state is pushing on food carts right now.
Yeah, that's what's coming down the pike for these food truck operators, which is why it's problematic for them now. They're kind of facing this deadline.
There was a cart pod up in Portland State University that made the headlines recently. But they ended up working out a deal with the university to get utilities put in to serve them. So it is, the infrastructure investment upfront is not, not insignificant. So one thing, this is not what we would require, something like this. It could be, it only has to be at least three. You'd have to have at least spaces for three carts. You could do a picnic table with an umbrella over it and call it good for a seating area. I mean, it could be pretty minimal. This is just kind of the bright shining example to show off, but to your question earlier, they could be all up and down, you know, existing businesses on 99 could decide, hey, I wanna run a couple utility lines out and throw a couple of spaces up for folks to come in on.
Like the, where the fruit stand is would be a.
Sure.
Right, that one.
Location, yeah.
One thing we haven't discussed, and that this may affect, perhaps in a positive way, is that there's a lot of food carts, probably predominance of food carts in greater Woodburn or simply not in the city limits at all. They're on Highway 99 and, you know, I live on Blaine Street across the street. That's not in the city limits. And so there are quite a few of them now. Perhaps adopting this will encourage some movement or not, but it does have some potential for, for, because my way of understanding is that the city or the county does next to nothing in terms of regulating or requiring any sorts of standards.
Many years ago, we ran them all out.
So it's, I, this is, I'm not being facetious when I say that when people, we get a lot of requests from folks who want to operate and open one up and they say, where can I do this? What ideas do you have kind of thing? They, it's not remotely uncommon for them to say, great, I'll just go out to the county because I don't have to deal with anybody. Yeah, that happens a lot, which is why you see so many out there.
And the law of the county is really considered the city, but it's not.
Kind of like to move on. We will definitely be seeing this subject again. Do you have anything else, Dan?
This is very timely. So if you are comfortable with moving forward, we would schedule a public hearing for the next council meeting. Otherwise, if you have further concerns or anything, we can come back. But if you're comfortable moving forward, we would schedule the public hearing for the next meeting in June. And following that, we would return with ordinances.
So the planning commission is done with it?
They have recommended approval.
They have made, okay, good. Yeah, let's move forward.
One, one thing I would like to have a little more information on is Counselor Caballus's point about predominantly, I think, Front Street, perhaps a few on First Street. How many just like small PSYROC operators do we currently have now? And what is the impact? Yeah, that are not related to a business and what impact might that, it sounds like they'll no longer exist.
And I think our code enforcement officer is probably gonna have a pretty good feel for that as well as our, Jamie's team who's downtown all the time. We know the ones who open all the time kind of legally and they open up and there's the, you know, Rapist in the Corn Place opens up pretty much every night out there. Wouldn't change, wouldn't change that in any way. It could still open up. It's the other ones. And that's, we heard the business association as well. They want it cleaned up. They want it, you know, get people legal.
Jamie might be able to add to this too. She was at quite a few meetings and I was at a WDA meeting where you guys discussed this. And I agree, the downtown businesses were against these guys pushing it. The competition hurts them. And they're operating under different guidelines than what a restaurant is downtown. We need to honor our businesses downtown.
There's also a fellow that's on the plaza that has like stuffed toys and such, in a kind of a shopping cart size that he seems to set up. Is that totally different than parking?
It is, yeah. Non-food items would, are just already not allowed to be sold on the street like that. So it would be an enforcement action right now, yeah.
He's been there for a while.
It's unfortunate for these individuals that have invested so much to be successful with their small kind of business hobby and be told you can't do it.
Like we need to come up with something, especially for those little carts that they push around, especially like around the Mejen Park and around.
Are they usually bicycles?
Yeah.
Farmer's market.
That's all like corn and ice cream.
I believe we have a park vending permit process that Jesse's department. Yeah, I don't know the specifics of that program and I'm not sure how frequently those permits are issued, but.
I could venture a guess.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Well done.
Lisa, thank you and the commission for all your work. Mary, yeah, of course. Okay, moving on. I do not have any communications. Business from the public. This allows the public to introduce items to the council, consideration that's not already scheduled on the agenda. Comment time will be limited to three minutes. And I do have Mary Berlin. We would love to hear from you. Good evening.
Good evening. Mary Berlin, 167 North Settlemeier Avenue, Woodburn. I'm here to discuss the noise and the traffic on Settlemeier. I know I've talked to Scott and he put in some kind of a sign that tells you how fast you're going. It means nothing. And these cars that are unmuffled and I can tell you the times, I have a license plate and there's no enforcement. I don't know what to say or how to make, you know, make it sound as serious as it is. It's early in the morning, six to 6:30, at night, one o'clock in the morning, and then during the day. It is, since all of the growth in Woodburn, it's become unlivable. It really has. So I'd like to know what we can do about it.
The council is gonna be having a workshop with our police and with the fire department and with Public Works to decide. We are all getting calls and complaints about that and I'd like us all to be on the same page. If there is something we can do about it.
There has to be a noise ordinance, decibel level or whatever, so.
Yeah, checking noise from a car, I don't know how that can be done, you know, but.
All right, well, I'll give you my, this license plate. There are two other cars that are constant. They don't do what they should do, so.
Yeah, addressing speed is, is a concern.
But the noise also.
Yeah.
It is really very interruptive.
We are seeing areas where cars are doing circles and doing a lot of things around that are troublesome.
Now, is the noise you're talking about like the, from the mufflers?
Right, you know, zzzzz, you know, stepping on it constantly and, I mean, the whole way of Settlemeier.
I heard a report on like NPR or something where there's, we have speed radar checks of a same way, but they also have what they describe as a noise. If they went beyond this noise level, they're, they would get pictures taken of their license plate. So they could be followed up. And it seems like we could contract with, if there's such a company locally, just like we'd contract with the red light people. I don't know, it's just.
So you're gonna put that on Settlemeier, you know?
Put it, put it everywhere.
Everyone, I have invited the police to sit in my driveway and, you know.
Sometime in the near future, we were gonna have a workshop.
Yeah.
Because it's like I said, this is something we've been discussing.
And are you gonna take the license plate of this car that we captured?
I think that's the gentleman's.
I'll speak. One thing that can be done is on the website, there's a, a place where an individual can download information about traffic complaints. And there's also a phone number that they can call. Both of those things go directly to our traffic officers who can then conduct enforcement in those locations. I, I will put, push back somewhat, saying that we are doing no enforcement is categorically incorrect.
Chief, before I go, I have a quick question for you if you don't mind. I think there has been a proliferation of vehicles that are altered to be loud. It seems like I've seen, seen that, big mufflers on cars. These are aftermarket components that are added. I think sometimes they're confused for cars that are really driving fast because they're loud, but really they're just driving loud.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any state law against that. Are you aware, do you know, can I, can I add?
We, we enforce the violation if the car is too loud. The officers, if they stop a car or they witness a car like that, they will conduct a stop and issue a citation. What's that?
How do you measure it?
It's based on the officer's opinion.
Oh, just observation?
Yeah. We're not able to go, like we use sound devices when it comes to parties. We're able to move up, get a certain distance away and do that. It is an estimation based, based on the officer. And then the individual has to get the muffler fixed and then that has to get signed off by an officer.
Now, is that just for mufflers or also for like the base and the cars and?
That's a different violation.
Okay.
Yes.
I just think it feels like I've just personally, anecdotally, witnessed quite a few people modifying their vehicles to sound like race cars when they're not.
That's.
They're like lawnmowers with loud noises.
In my experience, that's existed in the 30-plus years I've been in.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Are we to the license plates of chronic cars that we know are too loud?
Absolutely, because on the website, there is, like I said, a spot where you can go in and it's, you can fill in any amount of information. You can include a photograph and that goes directly to the motors officers who conduct traffic enforcement. If you don't want to use that, then you can use the phone number. That goes directly to their voicemail. And then they follow up on those things. It's very helpful because they then can focus their enforcement where problems are occurring. But I will say that our officers focus more on speed than they do on sound or some other things because that is a danger to the public.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Dan, just so you know, just if something's modified, like a race car, if it's modified that way with the muffler system and stuff, if you're not stomping on the accelerator, they're not that loud. My motorcycle was set up that way and it was horribly loud if you stopped on it. But if it's, if you're legitimately a racing car running around, just driving normal speeds, it's not gonna be that loud.
No, but there are some cars that are literally just 25 miles per hour.
I followed one the other day down the highway that was driving below the speed limit and it, I could feel, I could almost feel the vibrations of my truck. I mean, and it had a giant muffler on the back. I'm sure that was an aftermarket part that somebody ordered or bought or made.
I'm just saying for the legitimate person that is a racing person, they can get through town very quietly, not a big deal. But Scott's right, there's people just making a lot of noise, so.
They're just posers.
No.
Okay, let's keep these thoughts for future discussion, okay? We will, we will have that. Thank you, Mary. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be adopted by one motion. Any item may be removed for discussion at the request of council member. May we please have our city recorder read the items on the consent agenda, please?
The items on the consent agenda are as follows. Woodburn City Council minutes of May 13th, 2024. Liquor license application for Los Reyes de Lisiros Imas. Acceptance of easement at 1050 North Boons Ferry Road. Acceptance of easement at one zero five zero North Boons Ferry Road. Building activity for May two thousand twenty-four and red flags report for February through April two thousand twenty-four.
Any questions, anything that I know?
I have a question, so I think it's gonna slow you down a little bit.
Go ahead.
How many liquor licenses are we gonna keep handing out in this city? It's like every single meeting we have one or two. I may be exaggerating, but it seems like we're.
A business has a right to renew their liquor license.
Well, these are renewals or?
I don't remember if this was renewal or not.
Yeah, it just, okay, I see what you're saying, but I I was then under the assumption that they were new every time.
That had one before here, I think, but I can't I this might have been a different location.
I believe this one is a renewal. I believe so. This is an existing restaurant.
Pardon, thank you for the question.
We do we do have a lot of liquor licenses.
And if they transfer ownership, they'll have to, like if I if I sold my business to you, you'd have to apply for a new license to sell. So it's the same place, just a different person.
Do you wish to call it up?
No.
That's enough discussion, okay. Thank you. I actually have a question on the acceptance of the easement. Why are we doing that now? Why was the easement not accepted when this building was built fifty years ago?
Chris, you wanna get up here? I can answer.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Can I get on there? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Curtis.
Thanks, Curtis.
Yeah, hey, Curtis Stoltz, Public Works Director, City of Woodburn. One of the things that happens is sometimes, like you said, fifty years ago, sometimes the right of way isn't what it currently is now. So it may have been, say, like a forty-foot right of way and now we need additional right of way to meet our current code. So usually we'll pick these right of ways up when they come in to do some of these type of improvements with the development ordinance. So PGE also does it as well when theirs went from four foot to eight foot so that we have enough room to put in those franchise utilities.
Okay, thank you. The entertaining motion to accept the consent agenda is presented.
So moved.
Second.
Move second and all in favor, second, fourth and eighth.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion passes. Moving on, we have another couple of public hearings. One on our city budget adoption. I will open the public hearing.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Before you tonight is the adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five city budget. The Budget Committee met and reviewed this budget and approved this budget for your consideration. I think all of you mostly were there and if you weren't there, you've had an opportunity to at least look at the budget and read through the budget message and see the work that was done. I want to thank everybody who participated in that day-long budget meeting. You know, I think it's typically the best Saturday of the year weather-wise and there's usually about nine thousand other things going on that day. And we ask you to give up your time, not only to be at the meeting, but in advance to go through a couple hundred pages of numbers. So it's not an easy ask and I am grateful that you do it and I'm also grateful that the Budget Committee members also do it. Some of our longer-term Budget Committee members take their role very seriously and it's very much appreciated. The budget, I think, is probably one of the most extensive work products created by this organization that not very many people seem to look at, but it is critically important to the success of the city, short term and long term. And it's the kind of thing that can get us in trouble. Nobody likes financial crisis. Trust me, I've been there. We like to, the public to feel that the city is responsible and transparent and accountable for our budget and the city's finances. I just want to thank our staff. Karen's not here. Karen is our, I don't know if she's online, but Karen, which I haven't got my glasses on, I can't see. Tony's here, but our staff, our budget staff, the finance director, everybody, all the department heads, everybody that starts working on the budget typically in December or January to get to the point that you can review it in April or May, do outstanding work. Our budget continually receives recognitions from the Oregon GF, Oregon Government Finance Officers Association for its presentation and they give us feedback on how to improve it so we're eligible for the next year. The city's had several years now where we received that distinguished budget presentation award. And I can just say also too, this is the budget officer, that this is probably one of the most exciting budgets that I've worked on in my career. It was noted by the Oregonian that Woodburn's budget in a time when budgets are decreasing is increasing from one hundred and thirty to one hundred and eighty million dollars. That is notable. And it has to do with long, long-term planning from both the development and a financial standpoint. It's been consistency of leadership from the City Council and the staff for a decade. And so Woodburn is in a good position financially. That budget is gonna go down as we start spending projects on improvements, some of which we've talked about, some of which are still coming. But that money, the bulk of it is designed for infrastructure projects, just paid for developers so we can do transportation improvements, water, sewer, wastewater, streets, storm drains, projects like that. And our list is long, as you know, and we have a little working capital to pursue those for the community now. So it's a really exciting time for Woodburn. I don't want to say it was easy, but it's definitely better to approach a budget process in the season when you have good times as opposed to when you're having hard times. And unfortunately, Woodburn has been on both sides of that, so we know. A couple highlights of this budget. We are adding some police officer positions, which I think is great. I think it was noted in our conversation with Chief today that we'll have forty sworn officers in that with the approval of this budget, including the addition of a third school resource officer position. Now, those positions are will be funded with this budget. That doesn't mean those positions will be filled. We'll tell you it's very difficult to hire people right now. And it's very difficult to staff some of those positions like school resource officer that require kind of the right person to find just that right person to make sure it's a successful program. We have the Community Center Fund, another notable thing I'll point to that has one point three million dollars in it, a million dollar general fund contribution and the remaining portion of our ARPA funding. To that is intended to be startup capital and operating capital or capital that's required for the community center project to have a successful launch when it's completed. And the goal for that is to try to build up that fund as much as we can so that when that facility opens up and the doors open, that there's operating capital to ensure that it can get off to a good start. Like any kind of business startup capital, that's how we're approaching the Community Center Fund. It's separate from all of our other funds so that the community can see that the city is planning and making appropriations and working to ensure that the project can be successful and start serving the community when it's completed. This upcoming year also represents the finalization of our city's ARPA funds. I think we can be proud that the city was transparent also in the use of those dollars and made strategic investments that will pay the city back over a long period of time. You've heard me joke. I'm sure before long there'll be the sixty-minute stories of the cities that took their ARPA funds and bought gold Hummers. I don't know. Things that were not long-term strategic investments in their community. But Woodburn did do that and I think that we should feel good about it. The city is completing the use of its ARPA funds and we're coming out financially stronger than we were prior to we had those dollars. That's not true everywhere. I'm not gonna go over everything. I mean, we spent an entire day on it, but I will answer any questions about the budget adoption. If you have any, it's probably the, I think that the City Council should feel as good about this budget as any budget as I think I've seen in my twenty-seven years in the business. It is optimistic, it's forward-looking and it represents the hard work that has been done for, you know, city councils, for many, many councils in the past.
I agree.
Thank you.
Tony, you have anything to add?
It's a pleasure working with Scott and you as a city council to provide a budget that is sustainable and continues to show good fiscal management. It'll be a good budget to be able to present if when the bond measure passes, to go to the rating agencies with this type of budget that has this type of strength of of management.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the budget? Any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anyone here against the budget? Hearing none, then I will close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. Do you have anything to add? Any questions?
I just want to add accolades to everyone involved with it. I mean, if they couldn't work together, it wouldn't come together as well as it does. And with the leadership of this gentleman here and Tony, I'm just thrilled that I don't have to worry about it actually. I know it's the good hands.
This is the highest budget, the biggest amount the city of Woodburn has ever had in their history. And I feel comfortable and confident too with staff and people that put this together. I thank all the council members for being part of that, being part of the Budget Committee. Like John Reinhardt, who's Chair of the Budget Committee and has been Chair for about the last fifteen, twenty years, for his involvement and leadership. No, I agree, councilor, that I think that the process, while not easy, is important and done very well and done very right. Any other?
I think they enjoy doing it too, which is. All other animals.
I agree with what you said. Mayor, we have terrific staff and I was really impressed with the budget, especially with ARPA funds that, you know, we tracked them just exactly like we needed to do.
Any sort of other questions, comments, then we will move on to our state revenue sharing. I will open the public hearing for that and start that out with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The state revenue sharing program is money that's collected through the various state taxing on liquor, lottery, gas, sort of the things that the cities agree would not they would not tax in exchange for the state revenue share program that happened a long, long time ago. So those dollars come in and as part of the deal, the city is required to conduct a public hearing on the use of those funds. Those funds have already been included in the budget and you can look and see specifically where they are. I was gonna try to get the number written down before this, but I didn't do it, so I can't tell you exactly. Four hundred thousand? It is four, I mean, I mean, I do recall. My attorney has advised me that it's four hundred thousand dollars in total. But the state does require a public hearing on the use of those funds. Mostly they're dedicated towards the purposes that they're collected, some are not, but gas tax, for example, is for transportation and whatnot, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak on behalf of the state revenue sharing? Any proponents? Anyone like to speak against state revenue sharing? No one wants to say that we don't want any of that money? Good. Then I will close the public hearing. Any council discussion? Questions? We're good. And we'll move on to general business and the first item happens to be Council Bill number thirty-two fifty-three. You're up. Yep. You're up.
Council Bill number thirty-two fifty-three, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five budget, making budget appropriations and categorizing taxes.
Thank you. Council Bill thirty-two fifty-three has been duly introduced and is a resolution and as such requires one reading. May we please have the reading by title only if there's no objection?
Council Bill number thirty-two fifty-three, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five budget, making budget appropriations and categorizing taxes.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Then discussion's over. We'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Cabralis?
Yes.
Counselor Kentu?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Council Bill thirty-two fifty-three has been duly passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on then to Council Bill thirty-two fifty-four.
Council Bill number thirty-two fifty-four, a resolution declaring the city of Woodburn's eligibility and election to receive state revenue sharing.
Thank you. Council Bill thirty-two fifty-four has been duly introduced and is a resolution and as such requires one reading. May we please have the reading by title only if there's no objection?
Council Bill number thirty-two fifty-four, a resolution declaring the city of Woodburn's eligibility and election to receive state revenue sharing.
Any discussion? No, then may we please have roll call vote on this one?
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Kentu?
Yes.
Counselor Cabralis?
Yes.
Thank you. Council Bill thirty-two fifty-four has been duly passed. Moving on to general business, we have the word of construction contract for the City Hall basement remodel project.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's an exciting project for us. You'll remember the actually significant improvement project that we conducted here at City Hall and it's been five years ago now, it's hard to believe, twenty nineteen. City Hall was originally constructed in nineteen seventy-six and of course had aged quite a bit over that period of time. So five years ago, we made some pretty significant improvements to the building, including re-roofing, new HVAC systems, electrical, lighting upgrades, some ADA improvements, seismic as well. We also improved customer service counters, both at community development and finance, and added employee workspaces in both of those areas. But since that time, activity in the city has continued to really ramp up, specifically in kind of planning and building area in particular. And so the in order to meet the need for reviewing and processing all of that activity, we've added primarily building inspection staff, to the point that we can't accommodate them in the community development workspace currently. So we've created some makeshift workspaces downstairs that they've been working in for a little while now. And we're also just seeing kind of general growth in the need for employee workspace. So this project would actually remodel pretty extensively the lower level of City Hall to add a pretty significant workspace and plan review area for building department staff, as well as adding additional office spaces and some open like cubicle style workplaces for like an additional six people or so. So like all told, this actually adds, I would say, four, six, ten, about workspaces for like sixteen, fourteen to sixteen additional employees, a lot of which are actually working in the basement currently and kind of some substandard spaces. Includes upgrades to the one restroom that's downstairs plus construction of a second restroom. So we feel like this project would actually go quite a ways towards ensuring that we can accommodate the needs of the growing workforce that we're experiencing. We're talking about kind of the expansion of the city and the expansion of the city's budget and that is kind of leading, you know, kind of driving us to need additional workspace for folks. So this project would help us accomplish that. We received eight bids, which was pretty remarkable actually, especially kind of given the environment. We were really concerned about the potential cost of the project and you'll remember during the Budget Committee meeting that staff recommended and the Budget Committee agreed that to add to the budget that was originally included in what was proposed to the Budget Committee. We were pleasantly surprised actually that the low bid came in twenty-five percent under the engineer's estimate, which was pretty significant. So bids ranged from approximately five hundred and twenty-three thousand to about six hundred and forty-nine thousand. The engineer's estimate was six hundred and ninety-three thousand, so very favorable. The bids were pretty well clustered too, so it wasn't like we had one outlier. So we feel like it was some pretty solid bids here. So we are recommending that the council award this contract and then in addition, which is kind of common for us, is that we're asking the council to pre-approve an additional one hundred thousand dollars that can be spent on this contract for unanticipated cost change orders or whatnot. We don't expect that that would, any change orders would actually come anywhere near that, but it just kind of helps us to manage the project effectively. that, but it just kind of helps us to manage the project effectively if there are issues that are unforeseen to come up.
So you already have budgeted that hundred thousand already, right?
Yeah, we actually added-
So you got seven hundred and twenty thousand, says what the financial impact could be.
That's correct. So we have the budget, but we actually, with the contract award, we're asking the council to authorize us to spend more than-
The five twenty-two.
The five twenty-three. So that still falls well within the amount that's budgeted. And in fact, we're expecting work to begin a week from today. So some of the work will be taking place in this current fiscal year. When we do have funds budgeted this year for the start of the project, so that gives us more than sufficient funds to complete the project.
So what happens to the other hundred thousand that were budgeted, the seven hundred and twenty?
Remains unspent and becomes available for the council to reallocate in next year's, in the following year's budget.
Okay.
You've probably seen the construction trailer that is next door to cross from City Hall across Cleveland. That's a temporary workspace for the building inspection team because obviously they're not going to be able to work downstairs while the remodel project is taking place. The contract completion date is, by contract, is October thirty-first, so four and a half months and we're hoping that the project will go a little more quickly than that, but we want to make sure that we have sufficient time for the contractor to complete work, so we should have everybody move back in by the end of October.
Yeah.
Maybe they can get a skylight.
A skylight in the basement? Yeah.
We'll get it right here, right currently.
It's so dark in there.
It is, there is-
It's a very dungeon light.
Limited outside lighting, yeah, yeah. There is some, but it's limited.
So Jim, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
I, I haven't heard of any government, and I, I'm just a little piece of government, that's adding more office space based on hybrid work and things of that sort. Is this, is it, are we just ignoring that or is that, have you guys thought that through?
No, we do. I think we've had enough time post-COVID to kind of get a sense of what our kind of hard, hybrid work environment looks like. Most of our employees are in the office a significant amount of time. We do have some that do a little bit of hybrid work. It's generally, you know, a maximum of two days a week, so pretty much everybody has a physical presence here onsite and they do complete some hybrid work, but, so this, this need for this particular remodel takes into account the, kind of the current hybrid work environment that some of our employees are taking part in.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question also. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that the basement isn't used for storage somewhat, so where is all that going to-
The basement is much larger than most people realize. We actually have a couple of different archive rooms. There's a building and planning archive space and then there's an area for finance archives and then human resources and city recorder archives area. Those, those remain, so those aren't a part of, of this remodel project, so it's more the central part of the basement, which is more the open area that you see now, plus the area where we have some storage rooms. There's a little meeting room that's not used very often. In fact, we're using that as a part of the makeshift workspace for some of the employees that don't have, that we don't have room for upstairs, so, so the archive spaces do remain and it still leaves sufficient room to add these additional workspaces.
Did the material from the bungalow get moved to the basement when they started clearing that up?
Yeah, it did. Pretty much everything from the bungalow and the museum was moved here during that remodel project and it has all been, the stuff that remains has all been moved back now.
To the bathroom?
Of the, of the basement and the theater? Yeah, yeah, so, you know, not, not everything that was in that building was retained. A lot of it really wasn't, you know, worthy of the museum's collection, but everything that was has been relocated back to the museum and the bungalow theater and the stuff that's in storage is pretty much in the back of that building.
Does the print, like desks and computers or whatever you have down there that is currently being used for-
IT.
Workers? Is, is that going to be disposed of and replaced with brand new items or?
Good point. Counselor Shaw, did you mention IT?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd forgot to mention that our IT department is also located downstairs in, and actually pretty sufficient adequate workspace and they're remaining also. So that's how big the basement area is. It's like the entire footprint of City Hall and so we've got a lot of record storage areas. We have the IT workspace and then a whole bunch of pretty un or underutilized space that I think originally was kind of built for future expansion, I would have to imagine. And so it's kind of now the time has come for us to do that. So, yeah, the work, the desks and, you know, workstations that currently exist down in the basement, most of them are suitable for reuse, whether they're going to be reused downstairs or elsewhere, you know, in other city offices is yet to be determined.
Any other discussions? Questions? Okay, thank you, Jim. Do we need to have two motions for this or can we do it in one?
No, you can consolidate into one motion.
Then entertain a motion.
I move to award the public improvement construction contract for the City Hall basement remodel project to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, G.R. Smith Construction Corporation, in the amount of five hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and pre-authorized approval of contract change orders or amendments of up to a hundred thousand for this project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving second, are all in favor, second, fifth and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to ODOT, Transportation Safety Office Sustained DUII Enforcement Program Funding for Woodburn Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Marty Pilcher, Woodburn Police. Tonight I'm asking the council to authorize staff to proceed with the ODOT Sustained DUII Enforcement Program funding and if funding is awarded, to authorize the city administrator to execute the grant agreements. This grant will provide funding equivalent to a full-time position focused on enforcement and education of impaired driving to reduce the number of impaired driving collisions and serious and fatal injuries caused by impaired driving. In fact, the last two fatal collisions we've had in Woodburn were directly as a result of impaired driving. As you know, the city of Woodburn is experiencing historic growth in, in the residential and commercial areas and as a result, the Woodburn Police Department has experienced a significant increase in traffic and driving issues, which include impaired and unsafe driving. And in fact, we've seen an increase in crashes by thirty-five percent and a similar increase in our DUII arrests. Just last weekend, we had four DUI standalone arrests and then a, a fifth arrest that was related to a hit and run incident. Fortunately, no one was injured in those, those circumstances. The program position will focus on direct and targeted enforcement for impaired and unsafe driving, as well as DUII traffic education. That's also for the public, but also the officers involved will gain extra training in how to conduct DUII investigations. That's very important when it comes to the presentations in court. Further, one officer will be able to be trained as a drug recognition expert and that entails a significant amount of time. Actually, that officer has to go up, generally has to go up to Multnomah or Washington County to get the necessary exposure. That allows that officer to make determinations as if you have an individual who's perhaps under the influence of multiple things, perhaps a prescription drugs, illegal narcotics and alcohol. And it allows that officer to make that determination, which can be quite a challenge for your average officer who's not as, has not been exposed to the training and then is not recognized as an expert in court. This funding would provide one hundred percent of the requested first year funding from October first, 2024 to September thirtieth, 2025. The second year, it will be seventy-five percent with us matching twenty-five percent and the third year fifty percent, with a fifty percent match. That equates to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars the first year, one hundred and forty thousand dollars the second and ninety-eight thousand dollars in years two and three, respectively. And again, we're requesting that the council authorize staff to proceed with the application and if it is awarded, then to accept that, that grant.
Questions? Any particular criteria that they are looking for to, when they award the grants?
There are certain parameters they expect us to follow. We are prepared to do, one of the primary things when it comes to a grant is proper reporting and documenting everything we do. And with our CAD system and our report writing system, we'll be able to do that and report back to the state of Oregon and ODOT properly what our efforts are. Lieutenant Shadron has worked closely with ODOT in making this application and we're very comfortable with the requirements and more than capable of fulfilling them.
Thank you. Don't go away, stay there for a minute. Any discussion? Entertain a motion?
I move to authorize staff to proceed with the ODOT TSO application for the Woodburn Police Department Sustained DUII Enforcement Program Funding Project and if funding is awarded, authorize the city administrator to execute grant agreements.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor, second, fifth and I?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passes. Thank you. So, Chief, since our last meeting, you happened to have held an open house.
Oh, yes.
And I want to publicly say your, you and your department did a fantastic job opening it up to the city, the barbecue, your officers were very friendly and outgoing and I enjoyed it, actually learned a lot about the different aspects of it.
Well, thank you very much. While it was my idea, other people made it happen and I have to acknowledge them. It's everybody from the command staff down to the officers and it was a, a really great opportunity. We didn't know how many people would show up, we had over four hundred and I want to thank Pastor Molina and, and Charlie from Ray of Hope for doing the cooking and just the people coming. It's as important for, it's probably more important for the officers than it really is for even the, the citizens, the residents, because they can see how much people are interested in what they do and they have that opportunity to interact. It goes both ways, but it's very important for, for officers to have that experience also. The district attorney was present, CERT was present, we're, we have an MOU with Marion County for our SWAT services, we have officers on their team, they came. Woodburn Ambulance was there. I may be missing somebody, but it was an excellent event and I appreciate all the residents who came, including those that were here today.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we do not have any planning commission actions to discuss, so moving on to the city administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, I have too much to report. I was going to mention the open house, that was a really fun event as well and I thought the chief and the PD did a great job, they always represent the community well, appreciate that. I had the privilege to host the greeters program at the Masonic Lodge on Friday, which was kind of the grand reintroduction of that historic building to the community and we had, I don't know, forty people maybe?
Easily, yeah.
Turned out to that, a lot of interest in the building. Of course, the city was instrumental in seeing the work on that. There'll be an open house and coming up later this summer, we don't have a date yet, but we like to open up the building to the community, anybody who wants to come in and poke around and ask questions. Of course, I know somebody's got a set of keys, so if councils are interested, I'm happy to, to do that. Is it coffee hour last week with the mayor probably mentioned and Jesse presented the community center project? I was a little late to that, but it was pretty positive overall, I felt, on the community's, reception of the community center proposal. And then, I'm worried today, our two newest city counselors and the mayor were interested in seeing some of the city facilities that the city operates and so we had a good time. I had a captive audience in the bus, which I always like, because you can't, you know, you can't get away and there I am talking. But, yeah, we visited the wastewater facility, the Par Road Water Plant and the police department and took a look at some of the ongoing efforts of the city and sort of the southwest where the, the future is going to lie for our next effort. So it was, I appreciate your time for that and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It was a good trip. Counselor Morris?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Cantu?
Thank you for the field trip today. I haven't been on one of those in several years. So, yeah, thank you Scott, Curtis, Chief Pilcher for the, the tours. If anybody else has a chance to tour the wastewater treatment center, very fascinating. And then Jesse has done such a good job, I've attended several of the community center, the open house, the greeters, they did one for the chamber and he's just doing a really great job and excited to see what happens there.
Thank you. Counselor Wilk?
So I, I attended the open house for the community center and I, I met some new people and the energy in the room was, was palpable and there was really a lot of excitement around getting the bond measure passed and getting this really new jewel in, in the city created and so I, I look forward to the efforts to, to make that happen.
Thank you. Counselor Shaw?
Well, I've attended a few of Jesse's presentations for the community center, very impressed and I really appreciate the fact that Mayor Lonagren showed up at the estates and gave his state of the city address and hoping that Jesse can come back and, and give another update for the community center. There was a lot of information at one, at one time and, you know, sometimes you just need that repeated. At least at my age, I need it repeated, maybe once, twice, well, anyway. I guess that's, you know, all I have to say for now. Great staff, great staff, good budget, I mean, I'm all excited.
I don't have any.
Counselor Cornwall?
Yes, school is out on Thursday, praise. So just to be aware in the city that there's going to be kids out and about and-
So you wanted to say, "Slow down on Settlemire."
Slow down and just try and keep your eyes alert and open for, let's try to have them in positive activities if you have any chance.
Back to you.
Sorry, I just wanted to remind everybody to look at the last mural that has been put up.
Thank you.
It looks great.
So, yeah, I, please go by and check it out.
Back to Public Works Building?
Right, right. Stop in and, you know, give Curtis some static and, you know, just-
Jamie.
And Jamie, right?
Yeah.
No, it was great.
She's an artist, you know.
Artist, she did.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I can easily second and third what's been, been said there, the city has been extremely busy on the community center project, like Counselor Cantu said, greeters, open house, the estates, I thank the estates for welcoming us. Everyone realizes there's a lot of energy going into this right now and we can't give up because we still have a long way till November to, to keep working this. But I, I appreciate the staff's involvement, working with their consultants, we've had several meetings with them and, and that's looking good, so I appreciate that. Yeah, like I say, the, the city has so much going on right now, it's, it's tough to keep track of everything that we're doing, but, but it's working, so I'm very honored and lucky to be working with a, a good council that's involved and, and staff, so thank you all for that. So, some of you think that this meeting is over, but it is not. We are going to be moving into executive session and I would like a motion to proceed into executive session based on the authority of ORS 192.660 dash two dash E.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So we will move into the large conference room.
First to executive session.
Right now.